Okay. It's.
You go.
It's your turn.
Okay, I'll open up the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five special workshop. College order at six thirty-four P. M. The additions or corrections to the agenda tonight on priorities. Okay, anyone want to make a motion to accept the agendas, ready?
So move.
So moved by Counselor Webb. This is your second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Norman. All those in favors, A. I.?
Aye.
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 None opposed, motion carried. We'll move right into the priority list. Everyone has a copy. Trying to think of the last time we had a priority meeting. It was.
August or July.
Oh, was it July?
Yeah. Seven twenty-five, I think. So it's every coil. So the list is getting very short with anything that staff can actually work on. We're hoping is come the January one, you guys will come with, for a longer session, with ideas of what you want to add to the priorities list and then kind of jury those between you guys, kind of vote what goes on, and then take that list home to prioritize at that scene meeting so that coming out of January, staff has a, let's go into the new year with kind of a new order and new list of things. So we can go over what still kind of remains here and then in that January one, staff's probably going to move the ones that need big funding unless you guys all agree like we're going for a Parks grant to do the campground or we're doing something, maybe to a secondary chart that's, you know, projects should funding become available, maybe you prioritize those in their own list so that we kind of aren't keeping them on a list where nothing's moving. So the cameras at Spencer, that's been number one since fall of two thousand twenty-four. The pole has finally been ordered. It should be here in the next couple of weeks and then Mitch will install it and then Blake's going to run the electrical and put the cameras up at Spencer so we'll have eyes on, there'll be a camera on the new restroom, a camera on the snack shack, and then the pole of the four cameras. So that should give us a good view of the whole of the Parks assets and kind of darker areas.
So there's three cameras then?
No, so there's three sites where cameras are. I believe there's two on the Spencer bathroom, one that faces the play shed side, one that faces the other side. Snack shack kind of gets the back old field and then there's, I think, three cameras on the pole that get skate park, the middle, and then kind of the street view of the front there. So I think there's seven cameras total.
Okay.
So that's where we're at with that one. Lake Leek resolution, we're still just paying attention to it. The ones that are orange are kind of ones where we are going, keeping track of things. So the Louisiana Stormwater Master Plan, that's where we asked Mr. Purdue, who's doing all the development up there, to put a master storm system in kind of Oregon Avenue where there was already some wetland type area. So all of those homes are now going to be filtered to that and then hooked to the normal draw that's already in Oregon of storm water. So he's had to have that engineered, like I said before, I believe. It'll have to have a walking path, it'll be fenced for safety, it will be planted with vegetation so it's not just a big eyesore. So that's all the works for his development up there. Street improvement plans, this one's also ongoing. We didn't receive, as you know, the money for the paving, so we'll be reapplying in two thousand twenty-six. And then just kind of going off the list that we had already proposed of the streets that needed the paving upgrade. I N. I., that's the data and that's just, we're keeping track and every time we do the grouting for the manholes, it's getting updated and the condition reports are getting updated. So Ben keeps the rolling map of the different color coding of which manholes are bad and good and so we're just kind of slowly going over that. That's probably a ten-year project and then we're probably coming back and catching the ones we did at the beginning. Corey Hill Stormwater Connectivity. This one needs money to do a study. We don't have money in any of the funds for that, but the basic data has been collected. Currently, most of the storm water comes down either comes here to behind into Bear Creek through the pipe that's right by in between us and Rock or it goes down and goes left to the Kreps property that the city obtained. So it's being dealt with, but we really need to kind of, there's areas that could be culverted and some connectivity that could happen there, but we need a study, someone to have a sole focus on that, to really figure out what's missing there. So we talked about in the budget, we have the machine money again to do another round of crack sealing, but with the late summer and fall stuff, staff did not do it right now, they will be doing it in the spring, the second round using the bigger machine and hopefully getting the couple spots they missed here and then going to the east side.
So getting, I don't mean to interrupt, but they did a lot upon the hill.
Yeah.
And is that, it looks really good, I mean.
Yeah.
Is that area up there on the west end all finished now?
Except Bridge Street.
Okay.
Yeah, and then there's a section over here off Cougar that's not done either.
So where's our next big push?
They'll go across, across the grave ridge and be on that side.
Okay.
Yeah, so they kind of hit the worst scenarios here and then depending on if we have money, one of the things staff we've talked about is going into spring before the next recreational season, perhaps hitting, if there's any like bigger spots that we need to do where the linear trail goes through Anderson Park and that so that we're not just leaving that to do all on our own with the little machine.
Well, it seems like the crew's really, really got it down the system.
Yeah, I mean that bigger machine, you know, that amount of money and the work they got done with it, I think it was worth it.
The trail behind the lagoons has really opened up again.
Yeah, so looking at those areas and can we tackle that at the same time so that we leave people with a good trail path. The sign off in the tot lot, I'm still trying to trace down who that person is now. I don't know that they even care at this point, but it's been on there since when I started and it's changed multiple hands and I keep trying to find who is that position, but things just keep, I keep chasing it. Yeah, that's. Which I'm probably just going to have this spring Mitch and Tim put two elements in, document it, and then when I find the person, just send them the pictures because then we can take it off this list. The SDC increase study, so last time in July, I talked about sending that to Ruben. Well, now we're revamping the document because the threshold has gone up, meaning ours is a lower price so we don't have to go out for formal RFP. RFP, fifty thousand is the limit now and our study money is thirty thousand and so we're revamping it to not be as formal. The formal one is thirty-five pages long and so we're fixing that so that we can just go out and get three bids and pick someone and have them get going. Kind of related to that, the money that you guys put in the budget for the Public Works Standards Update, Robert is currently working on that. One of the things that came out of that is that the TSP, what developers are currently, we're requiring them to do is not directly reflected in the TSP. We don't have the money to do a whole TSP review, so what we're looking at doing is getting some money from the Division of D L. C. D., Department of Land Conservation Services, to do a small grant to just do an update to the TSP to make those match. The TSP has the very wide boulevards, it has planter strips where we don't really want that because then everyone's fighting over whose responsibility it is and we haven't been doing that on the current designs we're requiring and so we want those to match, but Robert's working on that. He's working on the Public Works site, Erica at the planer is who's talking with D L. C. D. about getting a bit of money to do an update. They keep trying to push us to give us money for affordable housing or all these things and we're like, that, that isn't happening here, we don't have the, that's not what we need money for. So hopefully they could give us a, not one of their veins they're currently funding, but a side project vein with just a little bit of money to update that. So the blue ones are the ones that maybe should be on a funding list for the, in the next round. That would be the lake campground project. We have the design in hand. We definitely need to either earmark money in Parks, should we have it, to do the underground first and then go for a grant, but like I said, those have to be in the same year to count it as match. The sidewalk master plan, we've been presented that by the Public Works Committee, but also that takes like tying it into an SCA grant or it takes us setting aside some fee and loo money to do a project, but those kind of aren't readily priority driven, so that's kind of information we have, but we don't have anywhere for it to go yet. The old dump site closure, so I did finally get communication back and unfortunately, DEQ and the DOJ are arguing about the orphan site money. And DEQ said, well, you could do it yourself, you could pay the hundred thousand and then get it reimbursed by us. And I'm like, what? No, thank you, this, like, no. I said, call me when you've got it figured out. So that's currently on hold until they figure out their, whatever their headbutting is about.
Has Ruben been working with us on that?
I don't really, I mean, I clue him into these things, but I don't engage with him because he costs us money if he can't do anything about it. So I did update him that they were in a back and forth and him and I both agreed, we didn't want to outlay the hundred thousand, first, we don't have it to, just for this orphan well, you know, it's not a public infrastructure thing. And second, we'll just keep paying the three hundred and forty-dollar monitoring fee to DEQ for the old dump because that's ultimately what we were trying to get rid of and that doesn't, that seems like a great price.
We're still paying it.
Yeah, we have to pay it until she gets a new well and we get released, but we don't have the hundred thousand, so we could pay thirty years of the three hundred and forty or even if it went up.
I've been paying for two decades already.
Yeah, and it, well, and it's just very incrementally gone up. I think it started at like a hundred and twenty-five a year or something was the fee.
Oh, it's three forty annually?
I think three twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, still.
Yeah, but until, I'd rather have.
Nice to get it cleaned up.
It would, but if we have their free money to do it and it matches their qualifications and Mary Ann gets a well, that seems like a better workaround for us.
Okay.
And it's a risk.
Yeah.
It's a risk, they may say, oh, yeah, well, but until.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was our concern, yeah.
Put a hundred grand in the ground and then they go, oh, you still got to monitor.
Or sorry, we're not going to reimburse you.
Yeah, yeah. So that's where that's at. We're still servicing equipment and maybe some of, just no surprise rule, I don't know if anyone noticed, the police truck had a bumper or ding in the back end.
Oh.
So we got a call from O S. P. that there was someone in the ditch. We went out, we should have called the tow truck. One of our officers tried to help the person and when they got up on the road, the person instead of gunned it.
Yeah.
And backed into him.
Instead of backing off.
Yeah. And so the taillight got.
Tailgate?
No, just the taillight and the bumper. Gary found, got us a new taillight and we're working with insurance, their insurance to pay for it, but just so you guys aren't surprised if you're like, what the heck happened to the police truck?
And they weren't injured?
No, nobody was injured, it just buggered the, broke the taillight. Bumped into the bumper. But yeah, we're just keeping up on equipment. Tim's doing great with the new zero turn that he got, that's really sped things up. And then we're just borrowing the tractor from Public Works when we need to do kind of open space things.
Have you heard anything from the county on their estimator?
Uh, we have it.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it. Jeff's been using it, we surplused ours, we still haven't had, it's going to that government website with the surplus vehicles where they do an auction, so we're not kind of having to take care of that. Jeff really likes it although he's very heartsick. As the old duck backhoes since there, he's just like, oh, she was a good old gal, you know? Eventually she'll go.
Okay.
But yeah, it's working good. Was there something else I was going to tell you guys about equipment? What was that? I'm not sure. Oh, so one thing, totally unrelated to this, but I don't know the, how many of you, I think you two were, were you both at the install of, or just you, Rick, at the install of the county signs?
Officer.
Were you?
Yeah.
So you know how they just put them in with the.
Yeah.
Long screws and we were all like, oh.
Yeah.
I paid Jeff Tigert, the park host that's a welder, to go tack weld over all the screws so they can get them off.
And did he?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they've all been secured, so you would either have to cut the whole four-by-four post off to steal the county's new wander signs or really do some damage, so.
Okay.
Sorry, that just popped into my head. So wage analysis and so that was, I don't know how much you guys are still interested in that, that may just come off in January if there's no interest. Remember, we found out that if we wanted to do drug testing, we would have to start a program, which we could totally do if that's still something of interest. We haven't had any accidents or anything that leads me to believe we need one. And then the wage analysis, we do already have the police that are on the step thing. The rest of staff are not on steps, but we, you know, you guys just have to mull that over if that's something that you're really interested in bringing to the table or, yeah.
Personally, no.
So another blue funding one would be the increase, increasing the sites at Anderson Park. That's kind of been on Parks' back burner for about seven years now, but it would really take a grant and ultimately would not just be this, it would be updating the electrical and pulling all new lines to the stanchions because of the Arby's going from thirty and more of them are now at fifty. So that's just a grant thing if we wanted to do that. Same with the boat ramp, although I think there's probably more likely angler access money now that we have the four docks, now that, you know, the stocking, there's a lot of fishing traffic at the lake. I think we'd be more likely to get a grant to do the pour-in-place push-in boat ramp at the lake and kind of update that for access for people that want to get into the lake more than some of the other ones. I think there's more money for that. Dewey Pool Fish Ladder, so I did put kind of a preliminary request to start, Robert and I, to start discussing with O. D. F. and W. now that the sewer pipe is out of Bear Creek and the waterfall sewer pipe is out of Rock Creek. We have kind of some preliminary versions we think could work and be pretty reasonable and so we're just kind of waiting for them to set up a meeting with us and kind of have that, start that discussion. And then the Anderson Park Boat Ramp, that's still kind of just waiting. We, we haven't had the problems we've had in the past, people are going to the Confluence to put in for the winter time runs or they're just not doing as much damage coming out of the old access that we have. And then the lake bathroom was the thing that's been completed between July and now. There's something else. Hate it when my brain, I was going to say something and then I'm, I'll think about it. Do you guys have anything?
Can I back up to the Dewey Pool Fish Ladder thing?
Yeah.
Is that concrete wall on the, you know, the east side of Rock Creek? Is that, how's that holding up? Is that going to have to be addressed here pretty soon, D. L. D. and all?
Well, that's what would, ultimately, the fish ladder would replace that wall. The fish ladder would go on the east side.
If we didn't put, have to put a fish ladder in.
We will have to put a fish ladder.
Oh, we will?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's their requirement because of the juvenile, the lamprey, the different things that they believe are traversing that section when we block it off in the summer, they want the access there. So ultimately, that wall would get removed and the fish ladder system would become the wall. It would be a new port, right?
So we could still put our bra across?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be incorporated, that's kind of, there's, they, the risk is if we refuse to put in the fish ladder and something happens to the infrastructure there, they could refuse us to have an in-water work permit and we wouldn't be able to fix Dewey Pool. So that's why we're working with them to do what they want to keep what we want, if that makes sense. So yeah, I'm trying to think if there's something else. Trying to keep and make sure nothing pops up that you guys are like, why didn't we know? I can't think of anything. Do you guys have any other things?
I'm going to back up to the lake campground project, more discussion on that. I, I know we were, you know, we, we hit a dead end line and we found out the cost.
Yeah.
And so there, but there was, we determined that we could possibly complete the project maybe in three phases, well, at least two. When did we decide what, what could we do and when can we start to do that first phase?
So.
Was there anything we could do before winter sets in this fall?
Not money-wise.
Okay.
So we either need to decide, are we going for grant money or are we setting aside money in our budget? If we set aside money in our budget and did it in the fall, it wouldn't be counted as match because it's a calendar year.
Right.
So that's the bummer part of us doing something with our own money outside of the window of it all being in one year, right? We don't have any money now, Parks is pretty lean still. We've had a little bit better camping at Anderson with kind of promotion and word-of-mouth with contractors, but not nearly the kind of regular ten or fifteen we had in the past winters. Hopefully this winter will be better. But it just depends, it's like, do you want to outlay your cash and not have it as match? Do you want to hold cash, earmark it in the budget, go for the grant, get the grant and do it like from, what, September to the next September, using our money and their mon, you know? It's just kind of.
So when we're planning on getting started in twenty-six?
Well, we, so it's one point three million dollars, the most we can get from them is is one million. So we're going to have to come up with three hundred thousand dollars either in cash or in value of in-kind to make it in one cycle.
Yeah.
We could go and we could, we could apply in the spring, the May ask, just for the first phase infrastructure and not use any, the tricky part is, is the million dollars requires about two hundred thousand dollars in match, so you're going to have to have it there. It's.
When you, when you apply for that though, you can say, we're applying for X amount of dollars and, and, and we will do so much match. If you don't get it, you don't do the work.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, our in-kind should be.
And then we have the SDCs, Park's SDCs, we can use for straight up cash.
For cash, if we had to go into second phase or something.
And so I think we've already kind of talked, we can do, we figured we can contribute about seventy thousand dollars of in-kind work, the boys putting in the sewer water, by the electrical conduit.
So if that's something Council wants to do in two thousand twenty-six then, we would just go into it knowing, figuring out what our value is of our match, putting that in the application and doing the first phase without the building.
Correct.
Without the showers.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we could go for that in two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah, I'd really like to. I, I know we're going to complete some of these others, but I'd really like to get that up in the top five, I mean, I'd really.
Well, no, and you guys will read, in January, you'll redo the orders.
Re-prioritize, yeah.
And some of these that are kind of less likely will probably.
I know we, it's been over a year since we've had our, we decided on what to talk.
I think it took eight years to build Anderson.
Oh, really?
Yeah, from the time they had them designed to the time it was actually done. So it just takes time because we don't have the funds usually, we're asking or we're going for grants, but.
But there is an avenue to do it with low risk.
Yeah. And not losing the match we can contribute, not having to be all cash, that's kind of the risk for us, yeah.
Thank you, Judge.
Yeah. Susan, did you have something you were going to ask about up at the top? You said you were touching something and I.
No, no, just, I, I think one of the things on the Anderson Park Harvey site increase, that would be an attractive grant because it creates self-sufficiency for this city to maintain it because of the increase.
Yeah.
Of income. And that's just something, when you do write a grant for it, and since I'm retired now, I can help with grants.
Oh, sweets.
For free.
Take your brain.
Also, we're going to reapply for our State Avenue funding in January, but we want to, I'll get ahold of Gustavo pretty soon, probably in November, and get all our ducks in a row and then we'll reapply in January for that one.
Okay. Yeah.
Just for information, Lake Leek, I did measure it when we were full pool and we were back up to forty-five gallons a minute. Not really our trigger point, I don't think yet, but it is coming back a little. I measured it the other day with low pool and it was only down like ten.
Oh, okay.
And so, so it is something in the elevation there, which is good because that means it's a little higher on the bank. Mr. Watts didn't cost us a fortune to go in there the last time, he had an idea of maybe how to address it a little better if we need to tackle it again, so I mean, we'll wait and see what happens there, but.
Yeah.
We may, and I know how hard the Parks budget is. Treading water, so. Well, trying to be really careful not spending any more than we have to there, but.
Yeah, but it is a moneymaker for Parks Fund, so it's like worthwhile to use some money to run it again, yeah.
And there's no way of sealing that through injection?
If we knew right where it was, but we don't. Because it's so, it's not like it's bare dirt, you can see, so it's like, it's filtering through something to get to that, so you don't know what's up here, you see where it's.
And we did, we found rodent holes last time and so if we cut the trench in there again and cut rodent holes, we know it's still a rodent problem, but he was saying, well, what we'd probably do is, you know, above water, top water level, cut a trench, put big rock in it. He says, they don't dig through rock, that'll stop them, then we can go behind, in front of it and behind it, dig the trench, repack it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, he's a thousand bucks a day, he spent.
Right.
Less than three hours down there the last time working on it, so.
It's worthwhile.
It's still a low-cost alternative.
Yeah.
But I don't know, at forty-five gallons a minute, it's time yet, but if we get back up, if we get back up to a hundred, then we're going to have to do something.
Yeah.
That's where it was last time.
Well, and with it leaking like that, it's costing us to pump water in, so, you know.
Yeah.
The electric bill for pumping water can offset some of the costs and what it takes to repair it, so it's, yeah.
Wouldn't you quit?
And we could probably drop some betonite in there too, that's another idea when we,
Yeah.
we do address it. Try to plug it up. Try to plug it up.
I, I wanted to ask, um, so you said you were gonna talk to Gustavo. Do you keep Josette looped in on those conversations?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just, because I just wanted to make sure, because it's, it's always left hand, right hand. And just want to make sure that everybody's talking together and keeping a prize, so thank you.
We worked pretty well at that.
Uh, one of the other things I am, had, did have Cassandra start doing this month is a time study on the bills. So, with the cost of postage, it costs seventy-four cents a stamp and we are sending, we are sending sometimes a hundred and twenty-five late notices out. And so, we're doing a time study to figure out what normal billing would look like, what the late people that decide to be late to dis- to determine, do we need to up the late fee to cover that? Do we need to maybe potentially look at a benefit for P- a reduction or a small benefit for people that decide to just do email billing and do it all online versus the paper bill, because it saves us the seventy-four cents every month? Um, so, we're kind of looking into that because it's starting to be a lot of money just in envelopes, paper, the printing per time, the postage. And then half the time, there's still about thirty-five people that up until the last day, then Public Works is going out and yeah, we have the shut-off fee. But some days, it's really problematic when it's a shut-off day and the Public Works has a project going on because then they're pulling guys to go shut people off and then two hours later go turn them back on. And I'm hoping we can kind of get people used to like, it's not gonna be cost... It should be cost prohibitive to just decide to make us... And so, and it's the same people every month that get the pink notice. And you're like, how, it's not a one-off thing. You are waiting until that pink notice and then sometimes you're waiting until the twenty-fifth at nine AM. Maybe figure out how to not make us that person for you. I don't know. So, we're looking into just what it's costing so we can make an educated proposal to you guys.
What of bills? Do we, does the city have connection with CAT for those people?
Um, people, if some, you mean the people that are late or the people that are behind? For people that are behind, we do give them the CAT resource and there are people that CAT has helped with. I'm just talking about the people that ultimately do pay, but they're costing us like a dollar fifty a month per person, plus her time and the paper and the printing and the whatever, to just decide to make it, you know? So, we're looking at, are, is the fees we charge still covering what it's costing? Or is it a time to up those or amend those and propose that in the master fee schedule or something? So, we are looking at that.
So, online billing, though you're using credit card, so then you have the, the two percent wire recharge, so...
Yeah, so it's all, it's all of that and all those numbers go into like, what's the picture?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's a cost to us there because we don't, we don't...
The merchant fees, yeah.
Yeah, merchant fees. And we've added that around, I don't know how many times when we do budget, we go, wow, we should be charging them the merchant fee.
And we don't take credit card payments over five hundred dollars anymore. If you want a building permit, if you want, it has to be cash or check. We don't, we don't eat those anymore, yeah. Yeah, so if you want to come in, even cemetery plots, we're like, mm, you're gonna have to, we're not gonna eat that fee. Because it's enough that it doesn't make sense for the citizenry to take on the, that, yeah. So, that's been a policy for about, well, this whole last year. We haven't taken any. Um, yeah, I can't think of anything else.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, but...
Well, look at this list. There's only eighteen on there.
I know, and a few of them are really need to be their own little, hey, or what grant are we going for? I'm thinking that all of the blues come to one thing and then you guys prioritize. This is the one you're going for a grant this year, you know? So, Lake, if the Lake Campground's it, then that would be the top one of the...
Has the, the Lake Boat Ramp gone to Parks yet or...
No, well, we've talked to them about it and we've said, with Robert, we've talked about, we would probably most likely, you know, cut the bank, cut the area, do a pour-in-place, push it in, redo the area, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's marine board funding is where your, your grant process would be, but it'd be nice if the Parks Committee could just kind of research it all force and bring it back.
Yeah. Um, I haven't, I know that they're bringing us a tree ordinance for the peace tree. Remember, the peace tree got put in the group that did that, really wanted the tree ordinance? I wasn't able to go with Michael because it was when my son had his accident, but Michael brought it to the Parks Committee to review whatever the proposed ordinance was and then they'll be bringing it to you guys, but... Yeah. And, oh, that, that was one of the things, when you said the county, um, I was thinking buyout lots, so...
It's breaking news?
I'm about, I was about to lose my mind. So, we get this message from the county that says, when are you gonna get the title reports? And I was like, wait a second, us get the title reports? You're the owner. Like, why would we get the title reports? So, Ruben and I went back through six years of emails, that's how long it's been. And the county council had sent us this paragraph in his email. And I go back five years ago and I send Ruben an email, the exact same paragraph from five years ago, verbatim. And I'm like, is this for real? Like, are they really wanting us to pay for the title reports? There's a couple of options and I'm talking to the person from FEMA tomorrow. We can do one title report that just shows all of them on one and what's changed, which is nothing, which is like three hundred dollars.
Perfect.
Or if FEMA's gonna require the individual ones, it's more like twenty-seven hundred dollars. But I'm like, this is really what we've been waiting five years? I'm like, I don't understand. And then I looked back at one of the emails and it said, hopefully, we'll get moving on this when we get back to non-essential matters. So, they see it as non-essential. They're not maintaining them. They're not, they're not fucked by them.
Yeah.
And so, that, to them, it's non-essential. And I'm like, this is just so ridiculous.
I'm gonna send my bill here for about ten thousand dollars.
Right. So, um...
It's been a lot longer, six years.
Right, but I mean, what I'm saying is like, since we've been trying to get them, either to mow them, give us fuel money so we can mow them, you know, we've been trying...
Well, it was legal counsel that was holding us up.
Yeah.
I mean, they were...
So, meeting with FEMA tomorrow.
Title company holding us up.
Well, no, the tit- someone has to pay the title company.
Well...
It's the county not wanting to pay it. But, um, one of the other things...
Do we still get those houses, the house?
Oh, that was the other interesting thing. They said, oh, the statute of limitations has run out on that, so we can't give those over. And I'm like, statute of limitations? You took them for taxes. What are you talking about? So, we pushed back on that. I don't know what they'll do with that. Um, it's, yeah, it's interesting. I'm like, well, then, if they aren't gonna give them to us, then we absolutely are gonna have to start enforcing code. One of them has an old dilapidated trailer with a tree through the middle of it. That's not code. That's a derelict structure, so... Yeah, it's, it's an...
Attractive nuisance.
Ruben sent me a thing, an, an email and he was like, this is absurd. And, and that's all his email said. And I was like, and I responded, agreed. Like, I don't know, we're just playing the game, but yeah, it's kind of crazy. Um, what else? We did help out the fire department. Ben made some, he'd been, Greg at the fire department had been waiting for the, um, emergency management to make him big maps of the fire district. And since he got hired, and they never did, so Ben went and used our big machine and they paid for the ink and we printed him big maps so that they, and he's like, if you guys ever need a favor. I'm like, okay.
Oops.
I don't think, because we did their handicaps, strapping and all the stuff for their back party and let you see. Anytime. I'm like, I don't know what, okay, thanks, Greg.
It looks nice.
Yeah, yeah, it's really good.
Someday, you will...
I know, someday we'll need something. But yeah, other than that, we're just kind of getting ready, winterizing everything. Hawkins Park Bathroom's been winterized and closed down. Um, I think at the end of Fall Ball, the Snack Shack Bathroom will get winterized and closed up for... And then I am talking to Brown. They have till the end of this week to get their loose stuff on trailers for flood season. And then we did get an email today that because of the government shutdown, NFIP is stalled. And people that need flood insurance renewals will not be getting them. And so, Wednesday, I'm sitting in on a webinar, like, what does that mean?
Well, yeah.
People uninsured.
Because if you let it lapse, it's all if there's a flood.
Yeah, we're going into flood season.
Or second of all, potentially, they could say, oh, you let it lapse, we're not gonna give it to you.
Right. And so, they did say current ones would remain and have a thirty-day extension past their expiration date. But they, the weird part happens when, and they did say that maybe if someone's selling it, selling a home, that the new owner could piggyback on that policy, but they're not sure of that. And so, we are going, I'm sitting in on a webinar to make sure what, what we don't know on Wednesday. So, that's pretty much everything I know.
And what about the new FEMA rules? Any update on that?
No, we're still just kind of going with the volumetric things and the trees and doing all of that. And yeah, I don't, I can't think of any other. Still waiting on a couple. We're trying to get the, the electrician, when he comes to do the pole, is gonna do the panel to hook the generator that, we have a power generator in the PD...
Yeah.
That can, that currently is just hooked to emergency lights, but could fund a lot more. So, he's putting a new panel and hooking it to more so that actual offices could run with computer, certain computer banks and phone systems for an emergency. And then the court, I don't know if you noticed, they got new cameras and they're gonna redo this door. And then they're gonna have a slide pass-through door with a window for her so she doesn't have to open the door to whoever.
Nice.
Um, that should be coming up pretty soon. That's what I know.
Some security updates.
Yeah. Now, I don't think we're a big risk, but now that all of the justice court comes here from all over the county, that's just a lot more foot traffic and risk of her opening the door blindly to who knows anyone. She's nervous.
County's not signing us a deputy on those days?
No, they only send them if they're in the infraction.
Again, yeah, that happened.
Right, you're really showing your true color.
Okay, finished?
Yeah.
Oh, adjourn the meeting at seven seventeen.
Awesome.
Meeting is...